Good evening. I call to order the regularly scheduled meeting for the York County School Board for Monday, August the 28th. Good evening, everyone. It's hard to believe it's time for the school year to start again. Where has the summer gone? We have a fun evening, meeting this evening that we get a chance to have awards and recognitions, and we will still take our short break where we may not be recognizing all students as we normally do. We have some, some staff members here that we will recognize. Before we get started, I would like to introduce to you our pledge leader, Abigail Barber, if she will come forward. Abigail has been a member of our Coventry family since she entered kindergarten and is getting ready to begin her fifth grade and final year. Abigail is a hard-working, conscientious student who is also a kind and caring friend to her classmates. Abigail is very compassionate and helps her classmates and teachers any way she can. This past year, she had a friend who frequently needed support, and Abigail was always there to lend a helping hand. She's also very reliable and is trusted to run errands for her teachers. Abigail consistently works hard and gives 100% to the work she does in the classroom. Outside of the classroom, Abigail has participated in the girls' running club and junior master gardening club. In her free time, she likes to sing and dance. Maybe she'll be in our talent show this year. When she grows up, she would like to be a kindergarten teacher, want to come back to York County, which sounds like a perfect fit for her. It's an honor and pleasure to have Abigail representing Coventry as the pledge leader this evening. And what a great way for her to celebrate her dad's birthday. Happy birthday, Dad. Please stand and join Abigail for the pledge.
(inaudible) To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Abigail. We will now move into our recognition and awards. I'm going to talk to, turn to Dr. Shandor, who will introduce our new staff.
Thank you, Ms. Haywood. Good evening, board members. So, we hired a number of staff members who are going to be new leaders in our school division, both at the schools and at the school board office. So, they're here this evening, and I'd like to introduce them all at this time. So, staff, when I say your name, if you'll please stand and remain standing. All right. First up, Ms. Whitney Cataldo. She's our new principal at Grafton High School. She has 17 years of educational experience, with the last 10 years in administrative roles that include six years as a high school assistant principal in Newport News and Pecosin, and three years as the international baccalaureate program coordinator in Hampton. Most recently, she has served as the principal of Craft Elementary School in Hampton. Next, we have Mr. Mark Kirk. If you'll please stand. New principal at McGruder Elementary School. He's served as a building administrator and teacher with the Newport News Public Schools for the past 24 years, at both the elementary and middle school levels. He most recently held the position as the principal of Yates Elementary School in Newport News. Next, we have Ms. Kristen Bollum. She is our new principal at Mount Vernon Elementary School. Ms. Bollum has worked in the field of education for over 15 years. She most recently served as the assistant principal at Mount Vernon Elementary School. Prior administrative experiences include service at Grafton-Bethel Elementary School and Gloucester High School. Next, we have Ms. Christina Wagner. If you'll please stand. Assistant Principal Bethel Manor Elementary School. Ms. Wagner was previously the York County Schools Division Coordinator of Language Arts and Social Studies at the school board office, prior to her appointment as the assistant principal of Bethel Manor. She also has administrative experience as an instructional specialist in Newport News and instructional coordinator in YCSD. Next, Ms. Melissa Horton. Assistant Principal Coventry Elementary School. Ms. Horton has over 10 years of experience in education, serving most recently as the assessment and compliance coordinator at TAB High School. She's taught kindergarten, first, fourth, and fifth grades in Virginia, Massachusetts, and Maryland. Next, we have Mr. Albert Green. Assistant Principal TAB High School. After serving as a teacher and coach within YCSD, Mr. Green became an assistant principal at Gloucester High School. He then moved to Matthews High School to serve as the principal for six years before returning to YCSD two years ago as the associate director of school administration. Next, we have Ms. Beth Welch. Assistant Principal Waller Mill Elementary School. Ms. Welch was previously an assistant principal at McGruder Elementary School. She's beginning her 19th year in public education and has experience as an LEP coordinator, behavior coach, and a classroom teacher. Now, we'll go to the second row. Ms. Deborah Ellis, if you'll please stand.
You want the front row to sit?
Yes, well, no, let's keep them standing just for a second. We'll probably get to see Cheryl Parr, we'll just have to move. Assistant Principal Yorktown Elementary School. She started in December. Prior to Ms. Ellis joining the Yorktown Elementary Admin Staff in December, she was an assessment and compliance coordinator at Yorktown Middle School, and has also worked as a special education teacher at Queens Lake Middle and Waller Mill Elementary School. Next, we have Mr. Bill Bowen. Chief Finance Officer. Mr. Bowen joined us from Henrico County Schools, where he served as the Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Administration. Over the course of his nearly 30-year career in government finance and budgeting, he also spent eight years as the Executive Director of Finance in Pecosin City Public Schools, and nine years as Deputy Chief of Administration and Finance for the Virginia Marine Resource Commission. Next, we have Dr. Aaron Butler. Dr. Butler started his career as a social studies teacher and was previously an assistant principal in York County School Division at Bruton High School and Yorktown Middle School. Most recently, he was a supervisor of Student Services in Williamsburg James City County. And finally, Ms. Cheryl Parr, she'll stand up on her chair. Associate Director of School Administration. Ms. Parr has been an educator for 31 years. She was a teacher for six years, an assistant principal for eight years, and a principal for 16 years, serving the last 11 as the proud principal of TAB Elementary School. Please join me in welcoming our new leaders to the school division, and some of the folks who've been with us in other roles. We're really excited they're joining our team.
Congratulations to all of you for your positions that Dr. Shandor mentioned. For those of you who have been with us, thank you for staying with us. For those of you who are coming back, coming to us, welcome. Glad that you joined the YCSD family. I want to move now to the York Foundation for Public Education, and, let me get my correct If, congratulations to Abigail Barber, if she will come forward. A fifth-grade student from Coventry who did our pledge this evening. Ms. Denise Ashby, a Y, a board member for Foundation, if she will come forward and present the special gift from Cookie Text and Edible Tweet. So, on behalf of public education, on the York Foundation for Public Education, and in partnership with Jeannie Fioka of Cookie Text and Edible Tweet. And along with that goes a Walmart gift card donated by a Foundation supporter. Her certificate will be coming at a later time that she will receive from us for tonight. So, Abigail, again, thank you very much. Ms. Ashby, thank you very much for being here. Our next presentation is the National School Public Relations Association Award of Excellence. Dr. Carl James will come with that presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Haywood. Good evening, members of the board. I am honored to announce this evening the National School Boards Public, excuse me, the National Schools Public Relations Association Award of Excellence for distinguished achievement in the category of school district internet site. It has been awarded to our Community and Public Relations Department for our entry onto internet of our back-to-school guide on our webpage. Accepting the award this evening is our well-deserving public relations team. Mrs. Catherine Goff, Coordinator of Community and Public Relations. Mr. Mitchell Beasley, Digital Communications and Marketing Specialist. And Mr. Jason Short, Senior Programmer Analyst. We are extremely proud of this team as they often perform tasks well beyond their job description. Please join me in a round of applause for this outstanding accomplishment.
While Dr. James is still at the podium, he will present the 2017 National Is a Coughlin Green Zone Award.
Yeah. Thank you, Ms. Haywood. It is also my honor to commend the Dare Elementary School staff for being the recipient of the 2017 National Coughlin Green Zone Award from the National Center for the Prevention of Community Violence. The award is presented for outstanding contributions to the Green Zone Program. The Green Zone is a program designed to prevent bullying and to build a positive school climate based on kindness and civility. Accepting this award on behalf of the Dare Elementary School staff are Mrs. Lindsay Caca Valley Principal, Mrs. Lisa Cersey, Assistant Principal, and Mrs. Latrice Martin, Please join me in a round of applause for the Dare Elementary School staff in creating a wholesome learning environment at Dare Elementary School.
And Dr. Stephanie Guy will come forward with the VIP Board of Education Awards.
Thank you, Mrs. Haywood, members of the board. The Virginia Index of Performance, or VIP, program recognizes schools and divisions that exceed state and federal accountability standards and achieve excellence goals established by the Governor and the State Board of Education. 2017 VIP awards are based on data from the FY15 and FY16 school years. I'm pleased to share that 13 of 19 YCSD schools earned VIP awards in 2017. This is the first time since 2009 that we've had 13 schools earn VIP awards. This year, four schools earned the Board of Education Excellence Award. This award recognizes schools and divisions that met all state and federal accountability benchmarks and made significant progress toward goals for increased student achievement and expanded educational opportunities set by the State Board of Education. Please join me in recognizing these schools. From Coventry Elementary, Principal Paul Assassin and Assistant Principal Melissa Horton. From TAB Elementary, Principal Mary Lugo. From Mount Vernon Elementary, Principal Kristen Bollum. And from Waller Mill Elementary, Principal Jennifer Goodwin. The division and nine YCSD schools earned the Board of Education Distinguished Achievement Award. This award recognizes schools and divisions that met all state and federal benchmarks and made progress toward the goals of the Governor and the Board. Please join me in recognizing these schools. From Bethel Manor Elementary, Principal David Wrights. From Dare Elementary, Principal Lindsay Caca Valley and Assistant Principal Ms. Lisa From Grafton-Bethel Elementary, Principal Lisa Ruffier. And Assistant Principal Gwendolyn Wallace. I think we need a larger dice. From Seaford Elementary, Principal Christina Head. From Grafton Middle School, Assistant Principal Doug Hartley. From TAB Middle, Principal Heather Young. And Assistant Principal Termaine Hopkins. From Grafton High School, Principal Whitney Cataldo, Assistant Principals Abby Martin From TAB High School, Principal Angie Siders and Assistant Principal Albert Green. And from York High School, Principal Shannon Butler, Assistant Principals Tiana Anthony and Ms. Jamie Carleo. The division also earned the Board of Education Distinguished Achievement Award. This is the first time since 2008 that our school division has earned VIP recognition. Congratulations to all on a job well done. These achievements are the results of the collective efforts of our hard-working students, dedicated teachers and administrators, and supportive York County families. Congratulations.
Congratulations to all of you and to all of your schools. The board will take a brief break so we may come down and greet all of you all, so that you don't have to stay with us for the rest of the night unless you would like to. So, we're going to take about two, three-minute break. What a wonderful way to start the school year off with, with the presentations that we've had so far.
That's pretty cool.
Fantastic opportunity. We move, continuing with our agenda, is there any unfinished business that we know, that anybody wants to bring forward?
No, ma'am.
I have none.
Thank you. We will now move under to presentations. Dr. Shandor, we have a construction report.
We do. I'll ask Mr. Sherhart if he'll please come to the podium and share this month's construction
Good afternoon, members of the board. Dr. Shandor, Chairman of the Board, Mrs. Haywood. This has been a very, very interesting summer, a very high-pressure summer. Got a few topics to talk about tonight, three, three schools in particular. The first of these is going to be Yorktown Elementary School. So, some, the project status there is they've, they're finishing up in the building, they're cleaning, painting, caulking, they're doing other things as well, and they're also doing the, continuing the roof work there. They've got the roof completely taken off and replaced. They're in the process of putting the white cap on there, the metal trim, and gutters and things like that. We're also in the process of wrapping up building regulations inspections. We have done the plumbing and the mechanical inspections. They expect to have the electrical inspection tomorrow. They're working on continuing to test and adjust HVAC systems in the building, and they're also finishing programming the new LED lights that were installed in the building this year, this summer. They have, they will begin work in the gymnasium very shortly. The gymnasium will not be available the first month of school. We, it should be completed by the final completion date. The reason that was not done, while the rest of the work was going on, is we had stored all the furniture and everything from the classrooms in that area. The, the gymnasium will receive new lighting, the windows will be replaced, and the entire floor will be replaced with a floor similar to what we put in at Waller, at Waller Mill and at Bethel, at McGruder Elementary School the last couple of summers. So, here's, I want to give you a little bit of a taste of what happened in the building over the summer. So, the first here, the first slide here is, this is the first week after school was out. You can see the students took, no, the contractors took care of the room here. They, they took the cabinets out, and you see the heat pump, the air conditioner sitting on the floor right there. So, they're very busy. This is just six days after school was out. You can see here on day 12, they had already started installing the cabinets in the, in the classrooms, and on day 46 of the summer, they had already started putting the lights in the classrooms. You see, these are all the new LED light fixtures. This picture I just took yesterday, you can see the classrooms are very, very done, the ceilings are in, everything's painted up. You can see the green wall there, that's their teaching wall. Our custodians have been very busy over the summer, cleaning and stripping and waxing the floors as the contractor moved on, then they'd move into a room and clean it up. Now, most of the rooms at Yorktown Elementary don't look like this. Most of them have a pile of furniture in the center floor, desks, boxes, and things like that, which is in the center of the floor so the building inspectors can go around and check all the walls and everything before they give us occupancy in the building. This is one of the large restrooms there at Yorktown Elementary School that we renovated. You can see here on day 48, it looked like that, and yesterday it looked like that. So, it's a major change just in a short period of time. This is a picture I showed you, I think I showed you at the last work session on August 5th on day 48. This is the main office there at Yorktown Elementary School, and this is the picture I took yesterday. So, you can see a dramatic change from just, just a few days there. On the right-hand side, you see the main office. On the left-hand side, you see the four doors there. That's the inside of the security vestibule. Now, we've passed through the, those, that's the security doors right there, so we're on the inside of the building. This is their new conference room. I think the principal would like to make it her office, but it's a conference room there. This is the new entry to Yorktown Elementary School. You see the, right there in front of you is the four doors, that's the security vestibule there, and behind the scaffold on the left-hand side there is the door to the main office. So, you can see it's very open and airy and very bright and colorful now at the entrance of the school. Taking us back a ways, May 20th, this is the way the cafeteria expansion looked. We had the concrete floor there, and they're building the concrete block walls. And then we go to day one, this is the Monday following school, and you can see the contractors are already very busy there, taking down the ductwork and taking out parts of the ceiling there in the cafeteria. Day 10, they were, they had put the roof on the addition out in the front. Day 23, they put the framing up for the windows. And on day 29, they started tearing down the old exterior wall that was between the old cafeteria and the new expansion. And this is what it looked like on day 30 with the wall completely gone. So, it's beautiful, beautiful sight now going through, looking out the windows, and this is what it looks like now. So, it is a very large cafeteria now, very spacious, very airy, and the custodians are, I'm not sure if it's tonight or when they're going to go in there and strip and wax that floor, but it's ready for them. The contractor's got just about everything moved out of there except for that one ladder. This is what it used to look like in October of 2016, not too long ago. And this is another view of the front of the Yorktown Elementary School in October. So, you can see the front doors there behind a tree, and the cafeteria is where the five windows are there, and this is what it looks like today. So, just a little bit of change to the front of that building. So, Bethel Manor Elementary School, renovation there, the 300 and 400 hallways. They're pretty much in the same place that the Yorktown, Yorktown, York, Yorktown School is at. They're finishing, cleaning, painting, and caulking there. They're continuing to install gutters and metal roof trim on that building as well. They're also wrapping up building and regulation inspections today. They've got their plumbing, their mechanical, and their electrical inspections done, and we anticipate having a final building inspection sometime tomorrow, hopefully in the morning. We had the successful fire alarm test today, and it did allow teachers into the front of the building where, where no construction was, took place this summer. So, teachers were allowed into the front half of the building today, this afternoon. Contractor will continue testing and adjusting the HVAC systems, and also finished programming the LED light fixtures today installed. The final completion for this project is September of, September. So, here's a picture, again, I want to flashback to when they started the renovation of the school. You can see this is day four. So, this is the Thursday after the students left. It's kind of bare. They took out the ceiling, they took out the lights, they've taken out the heating and air conditioning, the windows. There used to be water, radiator heat underneath the windows there, that's all been removed. So, everything's gone except for the floor. So, then, day 20, the contractor had installed window framing there on one of the wings of the building. And then, on day 23, you can see here that they installed the metal panels and the windows in the, in the classrooms. So, the classroom windows used to go from wall to wall. We only, what we did is we went back and we only gave them four windows wide, and what that gave us is an area on each side of the windows that they could put a bulletin board up and a, and a marker board on the other side, so it gave them more, gave them more display area. And so, that's what it looks like on the ins, from the inside. You can see the metal studs in the wall there on the inside of the windows. And then, the next picture here shows you where the drywall was, was installed. And also the lights. Now, this is a picture of the casework they installed in, or the cabinets they installed at Bethel Manor Elementary School. Obviously, it's not completed here, this, this is a work in progress here on day 65. This is a picture I took yesterday of the, of the computer lab. Now, obviously, it's not set up, but the, the custodians have stripped and waxed the floor, it's ready to go. You can see the new shades there in the windows, and we also added a lot of extra outlets and computer data jacks in these rooms, so. The other classrooms don't look like this either. The other classrooms have a lot of furniture piled in the middle and boxes and things like that, so they're ready for the teachers to come in there, unpack everything. So, this is one of the main restrooms on the 300 Hall. It did not look like this before the renovation, and now it, it looks beautiful. The colors of the school are red, white, and blue, and so we tied those colors into everything that we did at the school. This is the cafeteria, and we had taken out the ceiling there, and at this picture here, on day 46, the contractor had put this new ceiling grid back in. And then, on day 50, they set the new air conditioning unit for the cafeteria. And on day 63, you can see here they're installing, have installed the air conditioning ductwork, and the, the new lights had been installed in there, LED lights in the, in the cafeteria, and also the contractors in the process here of reinstalling the ceiling tiles in the cafeteria just on this slide. And day 68, here we have, you can see the, the ductwork is all painted red, the ceiling is fully installed there, and the contractor is in the process of finishing painting in that area. This is a picture of the roof there. You can see the white cap on that roof. The entire roof was taken off of the wings, the 300 and 400 wings at Bethel Manor, and replaced, and the contractor's put the white cap on. He's in the process, again, putting gutters and downspouts and metal trim around the outsides of the roof. And so, then, the third project is Grafton Schools, Grafton School Complex. And in that one, both the high school and the middle schools have been, roofs have been coated. I think I showed you a picture of that in the last work session. The roof is also been, being inspected by the manufacturer's representative. They were up on the roof today, and they're conducting punch lists up there, items, things that need to be touched up on the roof, and so the contractor's in the process of fixing those, those items that the inspector finds. They also have been repairing damaged sidewalk in front of the middle school when they were running their, their forklift, their lull out in front of the school, it crushed part of the sidewalk. They've excavated that, and they're in the process of repairing that, I have a picture of that. And we've also asked them to do some additional sidewalk repair there that, where it was cracked. We will receive a 20-year warranty for this roof. You can see here, this is the roof, looking across the middle school roof over at the high school, and you can see all the roof looks just like this now. It looks all white, so, because of the coating. It should reduce the amount of heating, the air conditioning load on that building dramatically. And then, this is the, the front of the middle school where they were placing the sidewalk at, so I just wanted to show you that picture in case some people ask you what's going on there, you can tell them what's happening there. And that's my last slide for the three projects this summer. Do you have any questions for me?
I, fantastic to see, I'm sure, the students, staff, parents coming back will be amazed at a new school and for new students to the building. And I'm going to hope that we keep our fingers and toes crossed that with the remnants of Harvey coming our way, that we won't have any problem with the Grafton complex.
The last, the last time it rained, I went in there and I didn't find a single drop of rain in that building.
Fantastic. Board members, any questions or comments?
Just Yorktown Elementary School, beautiful.
Gorgeous.
Just the openness. I think the community driving by that school now, just, and I just, the faces and the eyes of the kids and the families when they show up, that, when they have the open house and back-to-school night and things, is going to be amazing. I mean, just the response and the feedback, I think, we're going to get. A lot of hard work, you did a lot of good. Lot of hard work, you did a lot of good, did fabulous job this summer.
Contractors.
You probably do a vacation at this point somewhere along the way.
It was nice to see the old and then the trail into the new. Yeah. All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
We now move to comments of citizens. As I will call your name, please come to the microphone, give your name and address, and you will have three minutes to do your presentation. The first is Pam Pouchot.
Good evening, my name is Pam Pouchot. I reside at one oh three Kimberly Court, Yorktown. I want to tell you about a Virginia native, a graduate of UVA and West Point. He went on to serve for many years in the US Army and fought in several wars. At age fifty-four, he resigned his commission in order to join a foreign military who were attempting to form a new nation. The United States was now his enemy, and he was ready to kill for his new leaders. If I told you it was ISIS he chose to defend, you would be horrified. But it wasn't ISIS, it was the Confederate States of America. John B. McGruder eventually gained the rank of Major General by successfully killing US soldiers. He led Confederate troops in the Peninsula Army. He burned Hampton to the ground. McGruder said he was sending a message to the contraband slaves. He said he was preventing the desecration of the homes of white Virginians by these slaves and the Yankee invaders who might commandeer these properties. So complete was the devastation that only a handful of buildings withstood the catastrophic fire. Historian John Quarstein wrote, "The burning of Hampton changed everything. It was the first act of total war and part of the revolution here on the peninsula that redefined how the Civil War was going to be fought and what it was about." McGruder built an earthworks fortification called Fort McGruder on Williamsburg Road to prevent the advance of the Union Army. He was later sent to Texas where he was assigned to building fortifications, requiring slave owners to supply him with about three thousand to five thousand of their own slaves. After the Confederacy surrendered, he entered the military service of Emperor Maximilian of Mexico. McGruder committed treason, burned Hampton, fought to retain slavery, used slaves to enhance his war effort, killed US soldiers, and had no obvious loyalty to any country. McGruder was honored locally by naming a community after him. Ironically, after the war, freed slaves lived in this community until it was confiscated by the US government during World War Two. In nineteen fifty-two, at the height of the rise of the Virginia KKK, a York County Elementary School was built, and McGruder was again honored. The TAB area was named after Mary Octavia TAB, who served as postmaster from eighteen ninety-three to nineteen ten, and three schools honor her name. Dare was named for Virginia Dare, the first English child born in the New World, and an elementary honors her name. Waller Mill honors the Williamsburg family of Benjamin Waller, a slave owner. He was a lawyer, land developer, and an influential community leader. By board regulation, you say you do not name schools after anyone living or deceased. I beg to differ. Many areas of the county celebrate the lives of those who once lived here or fought traitorous wars. Our schools are named after the dead. There is nothing wrong with naming schools after deceased persons if you choose wisely. Honor those who have contributed positively and nonviolently to making the world a better place. May I suggest this board forms a committee of interested citizens to discuss this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person is Allison Lynch.
Good evening, my name is Allison Lynch. I live with my husband at one five one Breezy Point Drive. I'm here as a, just to share some personal reflections, similar to what Pam has been talking about. But I come as a, maybe you could call me an outsider. I was born and raised as a white, privileged South African during the days of apartheid. So, I'm very aware of having been the beneficiary of white privilege, and very aware of black oppression in that country. Very sensitive to the issues of race, and I think it's time that we need to look within ourselves. I used to, in the past, think, well, things were named for who they were named. In South Africa, they've torn down Cecil John Rhodes' statue. He was the person who has made the, made possible the Rhodes Scholarships to Oxford. They've torn down Queen Victoria's statue. There's a lot of debate going on in this country, obviously, about naming of statues. I'm a United States citizen, and I'm very grateful to be here. But with thinking more deeply about these things, I think we need to look at what the meaning of naming schools, naming statues, honoring statues of people that we thought were our heroes, maybe looking at the other side and the other point of view. Thank you.
Thank you. Move now to matters by board members. And I'm gonna start the far end, Dr. George.
Thank you, Ms. Haywood. Just a couple of points. First, I'd like to welcome Dr. Vivian. Thank you for being here with us, and we hope this is a nice first regular meeting with us here tonight. Good to have you. I'd just like to say thank you to, you know, Mark's crew and, and just for doing what you do over the summer to get this stuff ready. It's just pretty amazing when we look at this, the end of the school year, sitting here, and then we look at it again now at the first meeting, it's just, it's amazing what you guys do, and thank you for, for all that you do. You know, I'd like to just encourage all of us to, you know, say special prayers for those folks in Texas. I mean, I know you can't, you can't help but see it on the TV, and it's, it's, we're pretty comfortable here, you know? We've got our electricity and we have all that we need, and it's, you know, five days of very much discomfort. And so, anyway, please keep those folks in mind. And I would just say, let's just dive in, and let's make it the best year yet. And before you know it, we'll be sitting here saying, boy, that was a great year, getting ready to have graduation, so, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Richardson.
Just wanted to touch on a few of the things I've done this past month with the school system. I stopped by the Leadership Academy they had at the first part of, of August, and was able to see the leadership and the school division interacting in some good positive ways, some good training they had. It was really a good, good stop that I made there, I enjoyed going there. I was able to tour Yorktown Elementary during the construction process, and that was a, that was a good, good to see, some of the construction, and it's just amazing how quick it came back together, very fast. But you've had some big projects, Mark, over the summer, so, kudos to you for that, so. Also attended the orientation for the Youth Commission members, the new Youth Commission for the county. We've got some good, bright, young people in that commission, very interactive, very personable. I think they're gonna do a great job this year. I also visited TAB High School during the new student, new teacher orientation, stopped by there and saw a little bit what was going on there. Then also attended the School Board Chili Cook-Off. Heard a lot of, and one, yes. But I had a lot of positive comments from some of the school board staff there, that they really enjoyed that. It was, it was good for them to get together and do some teamwork stuff. They see the schools do it all the time with their staff and, and people, and it was good to, that they were able to do that. So, it was a lot of positive things there. Also attended the Division-Wide Staff Development at York High School. It was a very interesting speaker there that really kicked it off and got the teachers motivated, I think, for the school year, and then they broke out into breakout sessions after that. So, it was very interesting, but the speaker was, was amazing. She was a really good speaker. The last thing I wanna say is I listened to the public comments about the names of the schools, and I know, in doing some research today, or not, well, just a little while ago, looking on the internet, McGruder was actually the town, just like one of our people mentioned that was speaking, one of our citizens. And the school system, I think, devised a policy, or came up with a policy in two thousand twelve, that we wouldn't name schools after individuals, they would be named, not after individuals per se. Yeah, unfortunately, the town of McGruder was probably named after that general, but McGruder School was named because of the town. So, just like Dare, unfortunately, was named for Dare, not because of Virginia Dare, TAB because it's in the TAB area, not because of Ms. TAB. So, we've been consistent in that. I grew up around here, been here all my life, and we've always called them those areas. I've never known the names as the names of individuals because it doesn't have a first name that goes with it. So, I, I think the names of the schools are okay, they're just names of the towns that they represent or the areas that they're in. So, that's just my position, my point on it, everybody has their opinion, and I certainly do appreciate them bringing it to light, 'cause you don't know until you look this stuff up to see, you know, really what it is. So, thank you for, for bringing that to our attention. But that's all I have, but thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Vivian, this is your first, you were here when I was not here, but anyway, your first regular meeting.
Yes, well, thank you. I'm, as the newbie on board, I really, I'm still just getting oriented, but I did have the opportunity to go visit Bethel Manor Elementary and Yorktown Elementary, and was really quite impressed with the efforts that were going into renovating these schools. Great kudos to Dr. James and his entire, entire staff for the planning and programming and the execution of this, and to Mark, obviously, for all your efforts as well. This is amazing when you realize it's been ninety-plus days to accomplish a tremendous amount of work. So, kudos all around. I've been most impressed by all of the awards that were given out tonight, that thirteen out of nineteen schools, that is a tremendous accomplishment for any school district. So, kudos to all the efforts from all the school members and their staffs. I'll be going to Coventry Elementary and Tablet this week to get the opportunity to see what, how they're organized and how everything is coming together there, and how they're preparing for it next week when all the kids show up. I'm sure that'll be a major experience and challenge for both the teachers and some of the new, new kids that are showing up in first grade and the like. And look forward to all those kinds of opportunities. And that's really all I have, thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Medford.
They said about everything I wanted to say, except that I just wanna bring up a couple of quick, 'cause next time we meet here publicly, back-to-school nights will be underway, the open houses will be completed for, for all the schools, the handbook will be distributed. And so, just to the families and to the kids out there, students, take serious the handbook. We talk about this every single year. Read it, sit down, pay attention to it, know what's in it. It's got a lot of good information, but also has our expectations when it comes to behaviors and decisions. So, we as a board don't like to sit in expulsion hearings, and our staff doesn't like to deal with students that might not find themselves back in our school buildings and such. So, families, just take the opportunity to read the document. We put, our staff puts a lot of time, a lot of energy in developing that thing every year, 'cause it's always, it's a living, breathing document, I think, because it's just always changing and being updated. And for the families, back-to-school nights, those open houses, please go meet the teachers. And I'm really specifically talking to the middle school and the high school families. Elementary, they pack the house, high school not so much sometimes. Parents engage in schools, meet the teachers, you know, follow the schedule of your student, know where they're, you know, where they're going every day when they're in the school. Be involved, because it really makes a huge difference for that school. So, YCSD and this community really rocks when it comes to community service, so I just wanna emphasize that this evening to say that, let's show our teachers and our staff that we are a community that really engages our students, I mean, what our students are doing, but the schools themselves. So, and that's really all I had this evening.
Thank you. And I just wanna say thank you to each of you for your activity. I've been away most of August, but before I left town, I did have the opportunity to visit McGruder. And looking forward with the new principal at McGruder and some fantastic things happening. But for all of our schools, this is gonna be a great time, good school year coming up, and looking forward to it. And with that, Mr. Medford, you have financial matters.
Yeah, I gotta put the glasses on for this one. We have two months, folks, so I will try to be somewhat thorough but brief. We're going to first be looking at the June certificate for claims. It was four point four zero four three eight nine point one eight million dollars. And some significant expenditures that were listed on that document included about two hundred and fifty-seven thousand five hundred dollars for educational stuff. I mean, it's, it's the handwriting booklets and the second-grade correlation social study things, and the math reader for the Scholastic Book Club. It says a lot of stuff went into getting ready for the students as they arrive. You'll notice that through this document, there's a lot of payments being made to, for school construction, window, well, the air conditioning at Yorktown Elementary School, York Middle School, Bethel Manor Elementary, York High, Coventry, Seaford. I mean, a lot of different things went on in the, this summer. Mark talked about most of those. Well, we have to pay the bills, so those payments are being made through this document. Also, you'll notice to Motorola Solutions, we put up some more antenna systems in some of our schools, Seaford and Coventry, to increase the, just the accessibility in those buildings for communication. And then, continued on to the next page of the significant expenditures, you'll see more to Mosley Architect, roof, partial roof replacement and coating, some more of that that Mark talked about this evening, and the HVAC and roof replacement for TAB Elementary to Hudson Associates. All these are just paying the bills of everything that's been taking place this summer. If you go to the month of July, here, we had six million three hundred and sixty-four thousand two hundred and forty-two dollars approved for claims. Once again, most of this is paying the bills of a lot of the things going on. Couple of things I wanna mention, some people always ask, we have our graduations at William and Mary, what's that really cost? Well, we put four schools through graduations that day at William and Mary, and it cost us twenty-six thousand four hundred and fifty-eight dollars. So, not bad to use that building for the entire, from, we start setting up days before, well, the night before, actually, and, and we were there in the entire day. The International Baccalaureate Fee of eleven thousand six fifty, just wanna mention that, 'cause that is one of our programs that we do subscribe to. Then you'll see a lot of items here when it comes to school buses, cameras, I mean, it's, it's just stuff getting the schools ready, liability insurance, just everything's standard, everything's normal. We see it same this time every year. Towards the bottom, you'll see some shit communication, reference to repairs and maintenance of such security system cameras. If you flip the page, you'll see, once again, scattered through the document, multiple payments for the things that were going on at Yorktown Elementary School, Waller Mill, Bethel Manor, Mount Vernon, the antenna system for that particular school installed, and then Yorktown Elementary School again, and then some more payments to Grafton High, Grafton Middle School. All of these, and Yorktown Elementary, I actually added all that up, and like, just this month alone was one point, low over one point five million dollars in payments to pay the bills of what was actually happening at that school and the construction. Moving on to our food service document, monthly financial report, school's not open. We're, if you look at the notes, basically, we did prepay some sales for FY eighteen and some carryover for FY seventeen. We have a good reserve, they assured us of that, but keep in mind, we updated the key point scanners and point of sale, kitchen smallwares and, and display units and stuff. So, we did some upgrades in the cafeterias and used our reserve to do that, but everything's within the norms there except for that. And then, our monthly financial report for July two thousand seventeen, it's, we bought five new buses, so our income is a little bit higher FY eighteen because we rolled that invoice for July two thousand seventeen, kind of, and then our ethernet and internet service purchase order, kind of set things off just a little bit. So, these numbers and percentages will start to look more normal compared to years previous once we're really into, which we are. So, next month, we'll see that change a little bit. Looking at Resolution seventeen dash fifty-one, a lot of these things are just FY eighteen purchase items, food service management operations, two point three three five million dollars. That's for the school year estimated, well, actually, it's probably actual. And then, you look at York High School, interior door replacement, estimated about two hundred thousand dollars. Tuition at New Horizons for special education, we're estimating, or looking at about one point one eight seven million. And then, you'll see other educational services for tuition and career tech at New Horizons for eight hundred and sixty-one thousand three ninety. So, we're starting to spend our money to get our schools and everything ready for our students. students when they arrive next Tuesday. So with that, Madam Chair, I move Resolution 17-51 and financial matters.
Is there a second, please?
Second. Are there any questions about any of this?
If not, Mrs. Ford, would you poll the board, please?
Yes, a motion's made by Mr. Medford and seconded by Mr. Richardson to approve financial matters. Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Dr. Vivian?
Yes, I'm sorry, I can't hear.
Dr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Medford?
Yes.
And Mrs. Haywood?
Yes, thank you. Thanks, Mark, for doing two months' worth.
Two months' worth.
We'll move now to consent calendar. We have about five items on consent. The first is consideration of approval of personnel actions. The second is a consideration of approval of donations totaling $1,800. The third, consideration of approval of Resolution 17-53, a resolution of the County School Board of York County declaring its intention to reimburse itself from the proceeds of one or more grants made by the Commonwealth of Virginia for certain expenditures to be made in connection with certain capital improvements. A fourth, consideration of approval of a motion to authorize Carl L. James, Chief Operations Officer, or James Carroll, Chief Human Resources Officer, or William Bowen, Chief Financial Officer, to sign for the Division Superintendent in the absence of the Division Superintendent. And lastly, consideration of approval of minutes from the special meetings on June 16th, June 27th, June 29th, July 10th, July 18th, August 14th, two meetings at 4:30 and then also at 6 o'clock. Is there a motion to... does anyone want anything removed from the consent calendar? Is there a motion to approve as presented?
Madam Chairman, I move to approve as presented.
Second, please.
Second.
Mrs. Ford?
A motion's made by Mr. Richardson and seconded by Dr. George to approve the consent calendar. Dr. Vivian?
Yes.
Mr. Medford?
Yes.
Dr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mrs. Haywood?
Yes. Thank you. We have one action item prior to the policy action item, but one action, consideration of a motion to approve and to request the Board of Supervisors to approve the transfer to the Revenue Stabilization Reserve Fund of $985,608 in the FY17 local end-of-year reversion funds created by impact aid receipts over the budgeted amount. Dr. Shandor?
I'll ask Mr. Bowen if he can please come to the podium, please.
Put him to work right away.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Shandor. This action tonight carries over our end-of-year impact aid payments. As a general rule, the receipt of impact aid payments from the federal government is unpredictable. So there are times when we receive payments as many as five fiscal years in arrears. So that occurred this year, and so we have this balance, and per the agreement we have with the county, these funds revert to a revenue stabilization fund, which can then... those funds can then be used by the school with the concurrence of the school board and the Board of Supervisors.
Thank you. Any questions? Is there a motion to approve?
Thank you, Ms. Bowen.
Move approve.
Mark, is there a second?
Second.
Dr. Vivian. Mrs. Ford?
A motion's made by Mr. Medford and seconded by Dr. Vivian to approve the motion. Dr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Medford?
Yes.
Dr. Vivian?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mrs. Haywood?
Yes, thank you. Policy, we do not have any item under discussion nor first reading. We do have a second reading action item, and that's consideration of approval. A policy filed JHCE, recommendation of medication by school personnel through an expedited school, second reading. We've had this before, but Dr. Shandor, is there anything else?
Yes, this is... I'm going to ask Dr. James if he'll please come to the podium, give some information
Thank you, Dr. Shandor. Ms. Haywood, members of the board, before you this evening is policy JHCE, recommendation of medication by school personnel for an expedited approval. This policy prohibits school division staff from recommending the use of psychotropic medication for any student. However, under this policy, staff may consult with the medical practitioner with the written consent of a student's parent. An expedited approval of this policy this evening would place this policy in effect for the beginning of the 2017-2018 school year, and it would be consistent with current practice.
Thank you. Any comments or questions?
I have none.
Mark?
I was just going to... I'm glad to hear that practice because we... exactly, but this is something that just kind of shores up that our staff isn't there to make recommendations to a family because sometimes parents will ask that question. And now our staff has a policy that says we can't answer that for you. You have to go see your doctor or someone. But some... that does get asked, and so this... I'm glad to see it in policy.
Dispensing of any kind of medication is very tricky, so for staff to be concerned about dispensing medication is a major concern, so this helps to control that.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there a motion to approve?
Move motion?
Second, please.
Second.
Mrs. Ford?
A motion's made by Dr. George and seconded by Dr. Vivian to approve the second reading of policy filed JHCE. Mr. Medford?
Yes.
Dr. Vivian?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Dr. George?
Yes.
Mrs. Haywood?
Yes, thank you. Thanks, Dr. James. Want to offer anybody in the audience to have any other public input to this meeting. Thank you. Dr. Shandor, your report?
Thank you. I will be brief. Last week, as Mr. Richardson mentioned, we welcomed back over 78 new teachers in new teacher orientation. We've received excellent feedback from them, and we've... we take the feedback from the previous years and customize and improve on new teacher orientation every year. So we've got some really good feedback on that. He mentioned Leadership Academy in the summer. We had a great opportunity for 125 staff members, principals, assistant principals, and teachers to come together and do a lot of good work this summer. We also had our... last Thursday was our YCSD Division-wide Professional Development Training, and as he mentioned, the speaker we had was outstanding. When you have an opportunity and you're in the schools, I would encourage you to talk to the teachers and ask them about that day. She did a really good job talking about adverse childhood conditions with kids and, you know, mental health issues and all those things that we talk about. She was wonderful. She spoke for an hour and certainly kept our attention. She was excellent. I also attended the Transportation Academy to welcome back our bus drivers and staff. Also, today, I spent some time with our custodians and had a great time with them at their academy. This Saturday, Dr. Vladu and other members, Ms. Parr and Dr. Butler, who are in the audience, also attended the TAB and Grafton Block Party. So this is the second year we've gone there, and really pleased with the... every principal in the TAB and Grafton zone attended that, so really happy that they were there. A lot of positive comments, and seeing our administrators connecting with kids and families is obviously a great thing to see. So in eight days, we'll welcome back returning new students, and we're looking forward to a great school year. This concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you. Any comments or questions of Dr. Shandor? One thing I would like to ask, and as you mentioned, your speaker, a lot of our kids are coming to school with problems that we need to be ready for. And in the past, we were given a presentation from staff on just our level of involvement with students with mental health issues, with just things in general, and how we approach and handle that. At some point, can we get another follow-up?
Yeah.
From staff as to how we handle?
Sure.
Whether it's social workers, psychiatrists, what have you.
We absolutely can, and we'll certainly share with you. I know, I think Dr. Kegel does a presentation on professional development. We'd love to share with you that overall session that she did for everybody, and then she had several breakout sessions afterwards, and we're actually going to contact her and work with her through the school year so that she can provide some additional support.
And I think also, as administrators pick up problems in the schools and they need help, how do we address those concerns? Okay. I'm going to call on Mrs. Economow, our attorney. Couple of citizens spoke on the naming of schools and wanted her to share some light from her perspective and some information she's received. Melanie?
As far as the naming of schools, the school board does have a policy directly on point to that, policy FFA, that clearly states that schools are not named after people either living or deceased. And so Magruder would not have been named. It's been our practice for years. It would not have been named after any individual person. But however, there was a city of Magruder as well as Fort Magruder that it could have been named after.
Okay. Thank you very much. We are in need of a closed session. If someone would take us into a closed session, please?
Madam Chair, I move the York County School Board convening in a closed session to discuss personnel matters pursuant to Personnel Exemption, Section 2.2, 3711A1 of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act.
Second, please.
Second.
Mrs. Ford?
A motion's made by Mr. Richardson and seconded by Dr. George for the York County School Board to convene in closed session. Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Dr. George?
Yes.
Dr. Vivian?
Yes.
Mr. Medford?
Yes.
And Mrs. Haywood?
Yes, thank you. The board's in closed session.
Mrs. Andy?